I'd like to call the order of the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 18th. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Librada Soto. She is the mother of Eva Hernandez and her son-in-law Freddie. Please be seated. If we could have the roll call, please Denise.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember De La Rosa has an excused absence. And also we have present is our city attorney Scott Campbell.
Hi Scott. Okay. Do we ever have any announcements or written communications?
I have two very short announcements, Mayor. And the first one is effective June 1st, vehicle registration will only be conducted at City Hall on Monday and Wednesday mornings from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00. And I mentioned that last council meeting. And that's so I can get our code enforcement out on the streets as we are ramping up. commuter subsidies will continue to only be available in the afternoons. And that's Monday through Thursday from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that's by appointment only, which has been working very well. And just that the fuel dock float will be installed on Thursday, this Thursday, May 20th.
Great. Okay. The department head report?
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Couple of quick items for you. The saltwater transmission line repair at Crescent and Lower Terrace. Yesterday, Public Works crews completed the final repair to the 10-inch saltwater transmission main that connects the mounted reservoir to the southeastern part of the city. The existing infrastructure was estimated to be 50-plus years old that we replaced. So all the components within that trench that we opened up on that emergency repair about a month ago, we've replaced now and we're in the process of backfilling that. And then our major focus right now with Public Works is weed abatement in the public spaces. So you'll see us around getting all that done before June 1st to reduce our fire danger.
Yeah. Questions, anyone? Okay, thank you, Bob.
Good evening, Orin Karstafen, Avalon Harbor Master. Let's see, harbor crews have been busy getting the harbor ready for Memorial Day weekend and the summer season. At the Green Pier, the additional of the end float and the shoreboat float were completed in early May. We continue to increase the available dinghy dock space with the annual installation of the Barbara Pearson dinghy dock. And that'll be located over there by the wet spot rentals on Pebble Beach Road. That installation should be completed by the end of this week. Last weekend, Harbor Patrol moored 182 vessels for a total of 509 nights. So the trend is well above par as we increase the visiting boaters each weekend. The fuel dock with the Onnens sons has been running weekly and open daily. If anybody's been there, they would notice that they have lowered the fuel prices. We're seeing gas come in at $5.85 a gallon and diesel at $5.25 a gallon. It's substantial drop in the fuel prices. And only other thing we're keeping an eye on is some weather for the coming weekend. Looks like we might have a possibility of drizzle and some south swell that could cause some surge conditions in the harbor. Other than that, we do expect another busy weekend.
That is very exciting to hear the prices because I went to visit a couple of days after they opened and everything and it was, it was still really high.
Yeah.
So that is exciting. And if anybody hasn't been in there to see their little commissary, you know, they have tackle in there and, and all kinds of things to eat, and even dog treats. I mean, it really is amazing how they're equipping the inside of that store, so.
Yeah, it is. And, and they're just getting going, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. Want to remind the community, weed abatement June 1st. If there's any questions or concern from the community, please contact me at fire@cityofavalon or you can call me at the fire station, 310-510-0203, extension 205. Reminder, as I stated in my last update, that fire inspections will, for businesses, will commence on June 1st. CPR dates. We're looking at setting up multiple CPR classes and also we have some fire extinguisher classes set up already for some of the businesses. So contact me again at fire@cityofavalon for a fire extinguisher demo if you want. We have plenty of fire extinguishers and we also have a prop, an LPG prop that has actual little flame so people can see fire and we teach them about that. So first CPR class will be Wednesday, May 26th at 5:00. The second one will be Wednesday, June 2nd at 5:00 at the fire station. And the third one we have scheduled will be on a Sunday. And we're going to go 9:00 a.m., try a weekend. The cost for the class is $40. And if you want to sign up, we'll have this out on the city website tomorrow and social media. Again, sign up at fire@cityofavalon.com.
Great.
And then as social guidelines begin to relax, our plan is to host an open house to the community to educate and promote possible interest in our reserve program and also for the youth of the community, see if we could interest them in getting into some fire classes. And then just as a reminder, as the visitor count has increased, so has our call volume. The guys were busy last weekend, up late at night. So as a reminder, if you see or hear lights and sirens, please pull over to the side. Don't try and race to the next street. It'll, please don't go faster. Don't try and outrace us. Just pull over to the side. And a reminder, this includes parking in the fire lanes. One of my little pet peeve projects is going to be trying to clear the fire lanes on Lower Subner, Catalina, Clarissa, the construction workers who park and leave their blinkers on. Just because your blinker's on doesn't mean you can park in wherever you want. So we're going to be going around and trying to enforce the fire lanes downtown. That's it.
Well, you've been busy your first two weeks.
Just a little.
So on the, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the date on the Sunday CPR class?
June 6th.
Oh, June 6th, okay, thank you. Great, that's exciting. All right. And I took that fire extinguisher course one time and it, it's pretty interesting. And then you have to teach us how long I'm supposed to keep those little small ones at my house. I think, I don't know if I'm supposed to throw them away or shake them up or what, but, so you can teach me all about that. Oh, I will. Okay, good.
Good evening, Sergeant Grayson Klein on behalf of Captain Joe Badali. From the sheriff's side, we also saw an uptick in business. It was a very busy weekend. The deputies and the sergeants were very active. We saw an uptick in assaults and some drunken public arrests this weekend as there was a couple fights, which comes with, you know, alcohol induced. We are being very proactive on the drunken public arrests. We're trying to enforce to make sure that this is a very enjoyable place for families and tourists. And if we see people that aren't fitting the bill, then we'll be very proactive in making it right for everybody. That's all I have.
I know we have one bar that's opened and one, I don't know that you all are making patrols and going into those bars because they do have capacity limits. And if you haven't been, it would be nice if somebody would go by the bars to make sure they're only at 50% capacity because I believe that's the rule, 50%? Or is it 25%? Michael knows these things pretty well. In a bar, Michael Palmer?
The state of California is 50%, but I believe LA County is still 25%.
25 for bars. Yeah, that's correct.
Please check the bars out.
And are you requiring all the bars to post their capacity limits on the doors?
All of those should be, is part of this requirements that LA County has. They've got capacity limits under normal and then what it's been reduced to. And all of those should be posted by every restaurant and bar up at the front.
Okay, we'll make a note of that and do patrol checks this weekend and make sure that we're on top of that.
Great, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Because now we have people coming all the time and it's pretty easy. We've got a couple really popular bars in town, so, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be on it.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I hear. Council, did you have any questions or comments? Okay.
Annie, I neglected to, because when I went to the announcements, I neglected to tell you I have four written communications. Two are on item number seven and two are on item number nine, which I provided to the city council.
Great, thank you. And we don't have Dan, but here comes Matt.
Again, evening, Council. I want to remind the public, there's a public hearing scheduled to discuss the cost of service study for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste. That meeting is scheduled for the June 1st meeting, so two weeks from tonight. For additional information, please visit the city website at www.cityofavalon.com/assessments or contact the finance department if you have any questions. And I was hoping to have the visitor-driven revenue statistics through March updated on the website today. Didn't get done, but hopefully by the end of this week, the March numbers will be posted. I am pleased to report that cross-channel warfage was 90% of the pre-COVID March 2019. And I believe TOT is going to come in better than 90% of that pre-COVID March. So again, I'll have the numbers posted, but definitely encouraging to see for March. And so far, things look good for April as well. Other than that, we're focused on the budget and finance and we're on track to have that present to council in early June for adoption by the end of the June at the latest. With that, if there are any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Is the cost of service study happening during the regular meeting or prior to? Are we starting early for that?
It is part of the regular meeting. So it says 5:00 on the announcement, but it, you know, it could fall later in the order of events, but it's during the normal meeting for sure.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
City manager report, did you have anything? City attorney, did you have anything to report?
Yes, just noticed that the league and all the other groups representing public entities have sent a letter to the governor asking that when he rescinds his executive order allowing these type of meetings to be online without posting in each area, that whatever he decides, that we be given 30 days notice so that we can implement them. We still do not know what form of, what the legislation will actually pass. There's three options out there. Some of them make these meetings permanent and some give cities the option for these meetings. We're still monitoring that. One of them will, will go through and again, we've asked for 30 days' time to implement those new rules.
Great. Okay, Michael Palmer, did you have anything?
Not today, thank you.
Okay. City Council?
I'll go. I just have a couple of things. I will be attending my last session of the Contract Cities Municipal Seminar on Thursday. The first two have been interesting. And then it's something that I had talked to Denise about and something that kind of touches on what Scott just said of us having a discussion of how we're going to do our meetings and attendance and, you know, are we going to do a capacity, that type of thing, that I wanted to see if she would put on the agenda that we can have that discussion. That's it. Oh, and I just want to give a shout out to Edison. Thank you, thank you, thank you for fixing the old water leak and fixing the water leak that happened while you were there. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Lisa?
Just attended the connectivity group meeting last, two weeks ago and had some encouraging discussions with Catalina Broadband and have another meeting set up with them tomorrow. And then also watched online the LA Citizens Redistricting Committee meeting. And it sounds like we're working towards a presentation in June possibly for that to be able to allow the community to interact with, they're going to have a set of interactive maps so you can help decide, design and decide how the county districts are drawn. So you'll be able to actually choose based on population where the lines fall and present that as an idea to the committee. It's the first time that it's been a citizen-driven committee deciding that as opposed to appointed officials or elected officials or other offices deciding. So it's been an interesting process to watch them figure out how to conduct themselves and what to do. And they have a series of meetings set up for the next few months. And then just a side note that KISL is doing t-shirt sales and fundraisers. They are hoping to raise eventually $15,000 to remain on the air and in business. And so if you have a love of the local radio station and some of the shows that some of the amazing DJs we have in town put on, please make sure to visit their website and donate if you can. Thank you.
And the website is?
It's kisl88.7fm.com, I believe.
Okay. Great.
All I have tonight, if Lisa was finished, was I attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government meetings and nothing notable to report.
Great. And I just want to remind everybody tomorrow at 4:00 is minutes with the mayor, so I'm only seeing you once a month, so hopefully you will tune in. I've just, I don't have any special guests, but I've got a lot to talk about. Okay.
Hey Annie, sorry, can I add one more?
Oh, please.
We just got, just so you guys are aware, our community was the most interactive for the Water Talk survey that took place. Out of all of the communities that were offered a survey, we came back with just under 80 surveys, part in Spanish and part in English. And so as those results come, they should be coming sometime in July. They'll be published publicly and then we'll hopefully see what that brings after that.
Well, 80 people in our small town, that's, that's really good.
It was the highest percentage by community size and almost the largest number in general of a community filling them out, so.
That's great.
That is.
Considering it was looking.
It was looking real bad the day before, so thank you guys. I reached out to all of you to get people to do that, so thank you very much for doing the reach outs for that.
You pushed hard on that one, so thank you. Okay. We have a presentation?
We certainly do. We have Southern California Edison here and they, well, not here, but they'll be on Zoom. And we're going to provide the current water availability status and the approach to satisfying our water allocation waitlist. There are three representatives for Southern California Edison. We'll be starting with Vic Knoll. And we have a new member, Rosalie Barcenas. And then Luke Shaner will be doing the majority of the presentation.
Great, welcome. There we go.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Marshall, Mayor Protem, and city council members. Thanks for having us here this evening. My name is Vic Knoll. I'm SCE's Government Relations Manager for the city of Avalon. I really look forward to finally getting the opportunity to meet you all and work with you in person as things open back up. Our team appreciates the opportunity to provide you an update and the community on SCE's Catalina Water Availability and Allocation Plan. But before we begin, I'd like to introduce SCE's new Director of Catalina Operations and Strategy, Rosalie Barcenas.
Thanks. Thanks, Vic, and good evening, everyone. As Vic mentioned, I'm a new director specific to the Catalina Island and operations. So dedicated executive support for all things Catalina for SCE. So the team that normally works and leads all of our efforts on the island, so Ron Height, Luke Shaner, Vic Knoll, amongst a number of others, remain the same. The only difference is that I am an added, you know, support. So look forward to getting to know everyone here and working together. And as Vic said also, thank you for the opportunity for us to provide an update on our water availability and allocation plan. And Luke's going to talk us through all the details for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie, and good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, members of the council, it's my privilege to be here today to provide the information as it relates to the current water availability status and water allocation plan on Catalina Island. It's good to see new and familiar and new faces and hear some familiar voices. Haven't been out there in person, so we'll do the best we can virtual here. My name is Luke Shaner. I support Catalina Utility Operations at Southern California Edison. And do you have access to the slide deck right now?
Yes.
Okay, so we could move on to slide two. There, perfect. I see it now. And wanted to start with conservation. As always, we appreciate the heightened interest and efforts of the Avalon community and encourage everyone to continue practicing smart water habits. On the chart on the left shows the Middle Ranch reservoir level from 2011 through today. And today's represented by that vertical green line. As of the end of April, the reservoir was at roughly 83% capacity, equating to 876 acre feet. Continuing to the right of the green line, you see a projected reservoir level with persistent drought conditions. This forecast stage one would be met in September of 2022. On the right side, we show the 2021 Avalon D-Sal distribution water use compared to 2019. And this is a pre-COVID benchmark. And as many recall, January 2019 is when the system last exited stage one. What this shows is that there is a gradual increase in 2021 compared to 2019 and a year-to-date increase of roughly 13%. Also reflected in this graph is a gradual rise in demand through the summer months. We expect to see this trend and increased water demand continue until it peaks in July and August. And during these summer months, smart water habits carry an even greater impact. If there's no questions, we could proceed to the next slide. Now we'd like to present the community with an update on the current water availability status and our approach to satisfying the water allocation waitlist. We hope this improves understanding and communications on a sensitive topic. This is the first of routine updates where we intend to provide information related to water availability and allocations. We target providing these updates twice a year, pre and post-peak seasons, so the March to May and September to November cadence. So it's important to note that this is a plan and is subject to change as there are a lot of tasks controlled by external regulatory agencies. But for future communications, we'll use this opportunity to share progress or changes from prior plans and communications. From the image on the right, you see that the Catalina Water System is comprised of multiple subsystems. The Middle Ranch Avalon Toyon Integrated System, the Isthmus West End Integrated System, the White Sliding Isolated System, and the Blackjack Isolated System. Currently, infrastructure prevents us from being able to transmit water from the most robust system, like the D-Sal facility or Middle Ranch wells, to other more remote and more vulnerable systems. For example, the D-Sal facility located near the southeast tip of the island can only service customers in Avalon excluding Hamilton Cove. Fortunately, this area makes up most of the island demand and during normal consumption patterns, demand exceeds the D-Sal facility's capacity, allowing max production. The Middle Ranch well system located in the central part of the island can only service customers in Middle Ranch, Toyon by way of backup connection, and Avalon, including being the sole source of water for Hamilton Cove. The scope of this update today centers on the Middle Ranch Avalon Toyon Integrated System. And if there are no questions, we can proceed to the next slide. Now some background information. Historically, water allocations on the island were issued based on water availability on an annual basis or average day. Following the recent historic drought, SCE hired a consultant to evaluate the methodology for determining water availability. This resulted in an updated method and introduced maximum day demand as a key parameter that is now the industry standard. This max day demand parameter impacts SCE's ability to issue new allocations. On the max day basis, there is a deficit of 36,900 gallons, roughly 3.6% of current supply capacity. The next slide will show, will illustrate how we plan to address this deficit and also satisfy the waitlist. So these steps are grouped into four categories: regulatory and administrative, non-revenue water management, water master planning, and water resource improvements. The water allocation waitlist totals 30 requests, requiring a combined 42.13 acre feet per year. And roughly 80% of that, I believe, is in Avalon. So this next slide is the, that you see right now is the crux of the communication. Back one. And I apologize if I'm making the slides change prematurely there. This chart helps demonstrates where we are today. On the left, notice the green vertical line and moving from left to right, what requirements and steps are needed to satisfy the water allocation waitlist in Avalon. The vertical axis represents water volumes and gallons per day. The horizontal axis, although not labeled, represents an activity sequence and timeline. And the far right, from left to right, is roughly two years, based on our current estimates. The shaded areas represent the water source capacities. So the blue correlates to the average day's capacity and the green correlates to the maximum day capacity. The red and orange horizontal lines represent the mid-demand requirements, red being the average day demand, orange being the maximum day demand. And the dash lines above them account for the allocation waitlist, essentially how much supply capacity is required to fulfill the waitlist requirement. So if the blue area is under the red line, there's a deficit on an average day. And if the green area is under the orange line, there's a deficit on a maximum day. To support an allocation, there needs to be a sufficient surplus on both an average day and maximum day basis. And maybe the last boilerplate note here before going through the steps is this summary is based on historical data through, up through December 2019 and is updated annually. Annual updates may adjust these values. For example, if average day demand increases or decreases beyond this consideration, the red line would go up or down accordingly. Regulation does require that at least 10 years of historical data be factored. We anticipate having the 2020 data factored in this report for when we share the update next, later this year. And moving from left to right, you see step one is AL 123W or Advice Letter 123W. This advice letter's primary objective is to account for D-Sal capacity in the utility tariffs. If authorized, it will increase both the average day and max day capacity for allocation purposes. We filed this in late January and the CPUC suspended it from February 25th to June 25th due to protests received and needing additional information and time to review. Last week, we submitted a supplementary advice letter that, that increased the D-Sal yield from 111 acre feet per year to the 2003 to 2019 annual average or lifetime D-Sal average with Plant 1 of 126 acre feet per year. The next step, the State Board Alternative proposes to help meet max day demand with available storage. The California Code of Regulations differentiates between water source capacity and storage capacity. Average day and max day demand must be met by water source capacity, whereas peak hourly demand can be met by both water source and storage capacity. This step and State Board Alternative proposes to use available rig- This step and State Board Alternative proposes to use available Wrigley Reservoir Storage Capacity to help meet max day demand requirements. We are preparing this application package to submit in June of this year, and this graph correlates to receiving State Board approval by October. We are coordinating with the city, with the Avalon Fire Chief to reaffirm the fire suppression requirement and how it is met with the freshwater and saltwater systems. Next, NRW Management Phase 1, Non-Revenue Water Management. We look to improve areas within the system over the next 12 months to improve data, refinement, accuracy, and availability, and accomplish daily metering for individual systems like Middle Ranch, Hamilton Cove, and Toyon. We also look to replace meters and tests to improve accuracy and estimates, and we expect that these will actually reduce the max day demand requirement. Step 4, D-Sal P2SAY Increase is D-Sal Plant 2 Safe Annual Yield Increase. We target to increase the D-Sal facility's contribution to the safe annual yield total and what is represented in the tariffs to reflect its, the capacity it brings to the system. For example, last year, it produced 200 acre feet per year. Although this requires updating our coastal development permit and obtaining the necessary advice letter authorization. And lastly, Step 5, D-Sal Enhancements Phase 1 proposes to increase the D-Sal facilities further in how they contribute to the safe annual yield after completing the additional saltwater well and other treatment plant and distribution upgrades. If there's no questions, we could proceed to the next slide. And the following areas are key developments we anticipate in the next few months. As mentioned before, Commission Review and Approval Advice Letter 123W. Ongoing landowner discussions, review and approval of our D-Sal, of the D-Sal Enhancements Phase 1 project. The coastal development permit application submitted for, that includes both D-Sal Plant 2 and the D-Sal Enhancements Phase 1 projects. Most recently, I believe last week, we received an immaterial amendment renewed for continued use of D-Sal Plant 2. State Board Request for Storage Alternative. The non-revenue water management improvements, and completing our drought contingency plan. We're also looking to start to prepare the advice letter requesting an increased D-Sal capacity attributed to D-Sal Plant 2. And that takes us through the Water Availability Allocation Plan and next steps. So if there's no more questions, it would conclude our update.
I have a couple of questions. So on that AL 123W or whatever, you said there were people, somebody protested that? Who would protest? You said there was protest.
There was, and it, I'm not as informed as the full scope of that protest, but we perceived the protest to be more geared towards maybe perhaps our general rate case application. And so our response helped, or attempted to delineate between the two and what we're seeking to accomplish with Advice Letter 123 and keep that separate from maybe our GRC application.
Okay.
I will say that, in that communication, that protest was received, I believe, in early February or late February. And the latest updates with the commission staff and this supplementary filing have progressed significantly from those communications.
Okay. And another question, so Southern California Edison put in the application for like, I think it was $12 million worth of improvements, and that was to include the saltwater, the saltwater pumps, the line that goes up to Wrigley and that kind of thing? And is it my understanding that, because it's sounding like you're just now starting to get on with dealing with that, where you're not able to make any progress in the last two years on any of that? Because I'm trying to figure out a timeline for this whole thing, and it looks like you're looking at least two years before there would be an allocation.
Correct. And yeah, the D-Sal projects you alluded to, so we refer to those as the D-Sal Enhancements Phase 1. And yeah, our current status right now with that project is preparing the 60% design to accompany the permit applications.
Okay. So we're looking a little ways down the line before. And you've said that you're also working on, which is amazing if it's just now happening, but putting the D-Sal into the safe annual yield, that 200 acre feet, is that correct? You're going to try to put that in there?
Correct. Actually, what we hope to accomplish by June 25th is 126 acre feet per year attributed to D-Sal in the safe annual yield. And once we submit this coastal development permit application, then to start preparing the advice letter to request it increased further to better account for D-Sal Plant 2's incremental capacity. For instance, taking it from 126 acre feet per year to 200 acre feet per year.
And Edison has already started evaluating that line that goes up to Wrigley? You've already been doing some?
We've done some evaluation, and actually, as it relates to the DWR grants, we were still working on those grant funding agreements. And our plan would be to, as soon as those contracts are executed, we prepare a similar update to bring back to City Council and kind of share where we are at, our look-forward schedule, and how the scope calibrated from our 30% design when we submitted our grant applications to where we are today with the grant agreement.
Okay.
Or where we hope to be soon with a grant agreement.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you very much, Luke. Any other questions?
You're welcome.
Luke, I just had a couple of questions on the current use of the D-Sal plant. I know that there had been discussion originally about only utilizing it for a certain number of days due to being unable to provide storage from the D-Sal, so only doing a certain capacity per day based on use. I didn't know if there had been any look into having a program that would allow for use, that would allow for use in off-hours, prior to the start of a day or after the end of a day, where people could utilize water services, keep that D-Sal plant running longer, and increase the safe annual yield, and potentially even offer for those using services off of peak hours, some form of discount or less cost water value. It's seen in a lot of different cities and communities throughout the state, including Stockton, which I just got to experience. So just wondering if that's an option, if that's something that is happening, and is the D-Sal plant currently in use, or are we completely running right now off of Middle Ranch?
So those are great questions and good points on other creative approaches to maximizing D-Sal on the island. I think most of those statements you made were very relevant when we were in Stage 2 and we saw artificial lower use. But due to current demand trends, we're actually, water demand exceeds the production capacity of our D-Sal plant. So we are maximizing production currently. And actually, last year, we registered roughly 200 acre feet per year, which was the most produced in a calendar year. And that yield associates with an 80% system uptime rate. And the system downtime is attributed to maintenance events, both planned or unplanned that require the system to be offline. And so right now, today, we're producing as much D-Sal as we can, and we're only not producing D-Sal when we're doing planned or unplanned maintenance. And the plan for this year is to achieve equivalent or better production than last year.
Thank you. Counsel, Cindy, do you have any comments, or Michael?
I've received no comments.
I, oh, sorry. I just wanted to say thank you to Edison for joining us for the meeting. We appreciate you guys being with us and sharing the information. It's much easier to hear it from you than it is for us to try to translate it to the community. So thanks very much for being here.
You're welcome. And I extend that thanks to the operations team who's done a lot of work with limited resources. So I'm just here to say what, everything they're doing, so.
No, great. No, yeah, we haven't, the community will be happy to know that we're hearing from Edison. It's really wonderful. And someday, we'll meet in person again, so. And Rosalie, welcome aboard. And Vic?
Thank you so much.
And Luke, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Oral communications, this is an opportunity for people, people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Do we have anybody outside that wants to talk on items not on the agenda? Can you see anybody out there, Grayson? Okay. And Michael, do you have anything?
Yeah, I've got two comments. One is actually for an item, another one is just for oral communication. Paul Burchell writes, hello, this is Librarian Paul Burchell from the Avalon Library. I just wanted to quickly remind everyone that the Avalon Library is once again open to the public. Stop by to check out books, DVDs, magazines, user of our computers, and even check out a laptop or Mi-Fi if you need it. If you don't have the, if we don't have the book or movie on the shelf, we can still order it from one of our many other libraries over town. And we have a variety of fun giveaways going on right now as part of our Spring and Summer Discovery Program. Stop by the library and pick up a Spring and Summer Discover Program contest form and win free books, as well as chances to win other prizes courtesy of County Library. As the County Public Health Department decrees, I'm looking forward to starting our various popular programs again soon, more on that in the future. In other library news, I'm sorry to announce that the popular library assistant Suzanne has left the island. However, it's all good as she's gotten a new job she loves and has gotten married as well. Best wishes to her for her wonderful future. Now swing on by the library, and I'll show you her wedding photo, and you can enjoy a nice book, too.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, thank you. Okay, consent calendar. See, he even makes us laugh when he's not in person. I love that.
There are five items this evening on the consent calendar, four of them on the regular consent, and then one is the Housing Authority. The first one is minutes from the May 4th regular City Council meeting. Second one is warrants for a total expenditure of $832,726.01. That's for the time period of April 26th through May 7th of 2021. Third item is to adopt an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title 4, Chapter 4, Articles 17 and 19 of the Avalon Municipal Code, modifying the maximum length and weight of an autoet. Four is to authorize the city manager to amend and transfer the lease from Trudy J. Robinson to BCK Incorporated for the city-owned property at number 4, Pleasure Pier, known as Eric's on the Pier. Five is the City Council acting as the Housing Authority, and it is to approve the necessary documents in connection with a re-syndication and rehabilitation of real property located at 313 Beaconet Street, Avalon, California, and authorize the city manager in her capacity as Executive Director of the Avalon Housing Authority or her designated to execute all necessary documents.
So we can't know who BCK is?
It did say in the staff report.
It does. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
C is for Conrato Vega, and K was for Katrina.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, missed that part. Okay. So counsel, what's your pleasure?
And they are here if you had questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item 1 through 5.
I'll second.
Okay. There's motion and a second. Any comments?
Do you mind if we actually pull number four, just to vote on that separate?
Sure.
But otherwise, if we can do, just do four as a separate vote. Excuse me, sorry.
You want to amend your motion, Cindy?
I'm sorry, Cindy, not four, three. The golf cart, three.
Oh, okay.
My apologies.
Um, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve Items 1, 2, 4, and 5.
I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote. Councilmember Lavell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
Four eyes and one absent.
Item number three?
Yeah. Just a separate vote.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Item Number 3.
Well, her mouth didn't even move.
I know.
How did you do that?
Then I will second Cindy's motion.
Lightning fast.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Would you please call for the vote? Councilmember Lavell?
No.
Councilmember Ponse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall? Yes. So it's three eyes, one no, Councilmember Lavell, and one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa. Okay, so that passes. Item Number 6? Sure.
Item 6 is a transportation permit request from Dive Catalina. We do have the applicant in the audience, and to update you, they have paid for their transportation fee. The, we're still pending the business license fee, and of course, the vehicle hearing wouldn't be paid until everything is approved and in order. They are proposing to do the exact same route, which is Pebbley Beach Road location to casino only, and that is from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the vehicle hearing would be scheduled in the future. So if you have any questions, the applicant is in the audience. So staff is?
I have a question for staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, did I just interrupt somebody?
No.
Okay. With the transportation permit, what are the rules to parking in the loading zone? Is a yellow zone supposed to be a 20-minute zone?
Loading zone is for commercial use, so I believe that they would have permission to load and unload with a commercial sticker. Any other question? Is it a 20-minute zone?
Yeah, I mean, because you can't just pull up and park all day in a yellow zone.
That is correct. You may not.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's understood by the applicant.
You have to actively be loading and unloading in order to be in that zone.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay. So why are we considering a transportation permit if he has to go before the hearing officer?
Well, he wants to get an oversized vehicle, autoet.
And this is for you to permit him to be on the streets of Avalon, doing business?
Well, let me ask, we've got Dive Catal, whatever that one is, Lieberman's Business, he has that big truck, that probably is bigger than 133 inches, I would imagine?
Yes, and those are previously permitted.
Okay, and who else has a, like Bob Kennedy and that group, they have something as well? Cindy might know that.
A regular golf cart of some kind with a bed on the back.
With a bed on the back.
He's just transferring what they currently have. And I used to, I used to work next door at Brown's Bikes. And understand the need that they have to get their clients from Pebbley Beach Road to the Dive Park. So I'm totally in favor of the transfer of this. And I would also be in favor of him being able to go in front of the hearing officer to make the argument of having an oversized one. I'm surprised they were able to do business with just the quarter, so.
And the staff report does reflect that it's an autoet sticker type set. It would be 133 point something inches. And the difference between, so the transportation permit is because they're transporting people. If it were, they were just going to do the tanks, they would only need the commercial sticker. So that's why it's before you this evening, because of transporting people.
I'm sorry, is it going to just be to transport people or also equipment as well?
And equipment.
And equipment, okay, sure. Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 6.
I'll second it. Any comments, Lisa or Cindy? Okay.
Any public comments?
No, no public comments.
So call for the vote.
Councilmember Lavell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes. Okay, Item Number 7.
And for Item Number 7, City Manager Denise Raddi will be excusing herself.
Okay.
Due to a conflict.
Right, okay.
And, and the record will reflect, she's recusing herself because she owns property within the distance. within the distance where she...
Sorry, she announced that, I think, out of mic though.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Okay.
So, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Item number seven before you tonight is the consideration of encroachment permits for structures at a property located at 383 East Whitley Avenue. I also want to let the council know that I've got the property owners in attendance as well, following the staff report, should there be any questions. So just some really brief overview of this encroachment process. Back in 2015, the property owners had submitted an application and was subsequently approved for an encroachment permit to expand the existing top deck on the north face of the property that encroached onto the city's land where the existing sewer and utility lines are located. This strip of land bifurcates the properties between Whitley and East Whitley Avenues and was previously dedicated to the city by the Santa Catalina Island Company and recorded as an alley. And so that alley has certain obligations to ensure that there's public access to different modes of transportation. In this case, it's mostly walking, as well as the location of a sewer line and potential future utility lines as well. During the regular August 2018 Planning Commission meeting for a site plan review and setback variance to expand the middle deck and add a lower deck, it was brought to the commission's attention that a, the 2015 permit for the upper deck was erroneously signed off by the then interim city manager. While the city manager does have the authority to approve minor encroachments pursuant to the Municipal Code 4-9.105A, all other encroachments that are not minor, including encroachments for permanent structures such as decks, require city council approval. Further, a variance request for that upper deck was never requested and so it was never granted. This item then came back to the Planning Commission meeting at their October 2018 regular meeting, and the commission approved the site plan and setback variance for the upper deck and a site plan and setback variance for the expansion of the middle deck, but they denied the application and request for a lower deck. On both of these approvals though, the commissioners had set two conditions. The first condition was that prior to the issuance of any building permits and planned improvements, there would be a soil and structural reports to confirm the structural integrity of the deck supports. And the second one was to confirm the location of the sewer line within the city's property and confirm the applicant's deck structures would not impact that sewer line. The applicant and property owner has worked with Bob Greenlaw, the Public Works Department, as well as myself in the Planning Department to map out where that sewer line is. However, at this time, the soil report has not been approved. However, it would be a requirement should this encroachment get approved prior to the issuance of any building permit, so they would still need to comply with that condition. At the December 4, 2018 regular city council meeting, there was a public meeting held to discuss the approval of both this 2018 encroachment for the middle deck as well as the 2015 encroachment of the upper deck. The item, however, was continued and no decision was made at that time. There were some concerns, including some of the, the property that the city had around erosion and stormwater management. So following that December meeting, city staff have worked actually rather closely with the property owners to address these cities' concerns with encroaching into the city's property and particularly the ongoing issues of erosion, drainage, and stormwater. The city is requiring a mitigate, if approved, the city would be requiring mitigation measures such as the reworking of drainage swells, additional concrete curbs and retaining walls. These improvements and an annual requirement to certify that these improvements and the debris and weeds in this encroachment area that's contained and defined in the landscape maintenance agreement are properly maintained and are codified in the proposed landscape maintenance agreement that's attached in one of your attachments. Failure to maintain the area to the minimum city standards will subject the encroachment to revocation and potentially the disassembly of the decks. And I just want to reiterate, the staff has really appreciated working with the property owners to address all of these concerns. At this time, it's staff's recommendation to move forward with the approval of the two encroachments as we feel all of the city's issues have been addressed and that the property owners have gone above and beyond, finding ways to, to address these through their agreement to sign and execute a landscape maintenance agreement and to make sure that they continue to, one, implement these mitigation measures and, two, to make sure that the, that there's a mechanism for certification that they continue to be maintained. And the city will eventually use this as the template to address the other illegal encroachments that are in this area as well as in other areas within the city. So with that, that's all I've got. I'm available for any questions. And once again, I also have the property owner here, should you have any questions of them as well.
Comments, council, or questions?
Just a question for staff on some comments made that were in one of the items that we received from communication regarding some discrepancy between the ownership of the city versus the ownership of the Island Company. I don't know if that was addressed and/or confirmed.
I did just state it. It is, the, the property was dedicated by the Santa Catalina Island Company and shows up as early as 1946 in the record of survey. I do have a, a map of that that shows it. There is no issue in terms of property ownership.
So you, and you had mentioned, that was kind of one of my questions. How many other encroachments permits went through, because of the other property owners that are rather concerned? And I understand that there are some that are, explain to me some of the other properties and, and you said that they might not have legal encroachments, so talk to me about that a little bit.
We would need to do some additional investigation, but if we're looking at the property map and survey lines, it does look like there are other properties that do have encroachments, and the city is currently investigating whether those have been properly obtained or were illegally constructed.
Then I have another question, because there was also something on the agreement. I think the insurance was one, and then there was another, the copy of liability insurance, applicable post to maintain for the term of security bond. How are those decided?
We would negotiate the, we, we have, on the insurance, the city has a standard insurance requirement limits, and I believe they're up to a million dollars. That is standard for all encroachment permits. The second part is we would work with the property owners to come to an agreement on a bond surety sufficient to address the, the issues and the risk.
And do we have the mechanism in place to look at this in five years? I mean, is it their responsibility to come back and say, okay, the five years is up? Or?
It's their responsibility. So one of the concerns was making sure that whatever improvements are done is properly maintained. And the landscape maintenance agreement, if executed, would be the mechanism by which we get that guarantee, because they would be required to annually self-certify that the area in which they're encroaching on, as defined in that agreement, is maintained to the city's standards and maintained to the level of service that's defined in that landscape maintenance agreement. If they don't, we don't have to wait for the five-year normal to address that. We can go back to the property owners and require them to either make the necessary improvements or, and bring it back up to the, the standard level or risk revocation of their encroachment permit. And then on an annual basis, after that five years, they would continue, that would essentially continue in perpetuity until the city either terminated the encroachment permit or, at the request of the property owner, they cease to, to want that also. And this would be covenant to run with the land, not necessarily, so regardless of property owner, not, not with the, just the current property owner now.
So we don't know with those other people that have the encroachments, whether they were legal or not, but right now, so I guess I, so let's say they have a, somehow there's a problem with the land, not the maintenance, but just the drainage or the whatever, but that would impact people downstream, correct?
It is, but part of the landscape maintenance agreement is requiring them to make substantial improvements to that area to impact and redirect and account for the stormwater and water runoff. And once those improvements are made, we will be moving through to other property owners to ensure that the rest of that area gets cleared out and verifying that they have encroachments on those properties.
And let's say they don't. Because I know in one of the letters we got, there was a concern...
If they don't have an encro, a valid encroachment permit, they would have to, they would be required to submit an application should they wish to continue to keep the encroachment for council's consideration of approval. And then we would, as the same recommendation, be recommending them enter into another landscape maintenance agreement so that the area in which they're encroaching on are maintained properly to a specific standard of service.
Okay. Council comments?
So, Michael, I have a question. Is the, this whole thing is very confusing, and some of the information we've received today, I don't feel like all of those questions have been answered or verified, if you will. But it's, is it my, I feel like from a couple people that I've talked to, that the issue is the lowest level of the deck, but then I heard that it was the middle deck that was an issue. So, do you, do you know what I'm saying? Do you, do you understand, or have you heard these concerns and can you shed light on that?
So, the lower deck was denied by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had granted an extension of the middle deck, and they had granted previously, through a different process, the build-out and expansion of the upper deck. And so there is no lower deck that has been permitted through the Planning Commission. If the encroachment is permitted or approved here, they would continue with the original plans as, as presented.
On the lower deck?
Not on the lower. The lower deck is, has not been approved by the Planning Commission. That, that would not be allowed to continue. That was already denied in 2018.
So is the, the intent would then be, so there's three decks. There's the top deck, the middle deck, and the lower deck. So the lower deck is going to go away?
The lower deck would be allowed to stay, but only within the, the footprint at which it was originally built at. They, they wouldn't be allowed to, to extend it out or, or to do anything else. If it's on their property, the city doesn't really have any, any issue with that.
But from the pictures that I took today, it looks like it is way over on the proper, on the city's property. I, I guess that's where I'm kind of...
Yeah, I'm going to have Bob speak a little bit more eloquently to the, to the deck.
Okay, so the, the house is about at the 10 foot, right at the property line there, and then so we're going in, so we've already gone past the 10-foot setback a long time ago when the house was built. Now we're going into the alley. So, yeah, and it's substantially within the alley there. You know, it's about half the distance there.
The lower deck.
Okay, but, so the house...
The middle deck, the middle deck.
No, he, she was talking about the lowest.
The lowest deck?
Uh huh.
There's no lower deck.
There is no lower deck, as it stands right now. I misspoke.
So really what you have is, is posts, there's, there's posts in the foundation. Okay? And then you're going to build a middle deck. That was what was, they were working on, that middle deck. They already had the upper deck. And then there was two additional decks that they wanted to build. One was lower, and you wouldn't be able to go underneath that deck. And then there was the middle deck. Okay? And they, they stopped construction, and there's just posts that are on foundations right now. And there, there's some members that are across there, but they're not, you know, they're not the deck yet. They still need to complete the deck, the, the middle deck.
So when I was up there, what I'm seeing is, is the crossbars, yes, and the posts in the ground, and there's a bunch of two-by-fours laying on that, which it, it appears from my perspective that it was a deck. But those posts, if they were to expand the middle deck, it's those posts that would, it's only posts that would encroach on the city's property. It wouldn't actually be a deck itself down at the ground level.
Not at the ground.
That's correct.
That's correct. You'd be able to walk underneath it. Okay? So, um, let's see. And I think what you're seeing down at the lower level is they're actually using that as part of like scaffold to get up to the next level. So they're getting a flat area. There's no flat area in that alley, easement, I mean, that alley property there, so. So I think that's what you're seeing.
Okay, and then, but don't you guys feel like this is setting a precedent, though?
Um, well, there's, whether we make decisions to allow use of city property, on this circumstance, an alley can be used for any type of access, okay? And, and so, and here, you can walk on that access, you can't drive, you can't provide trash service like our other alleys. And an alley is also used for utilities, and that's mainly what alleys are used for. And here, you know, it's, it basically is utilities and some public walking access that should be maintained open. And any of these encroachment permits I think you would get from staff wouldn't restrict that public access. But is there something that's also a higher and best use? And you also don't want to be, allow this property to be used for free. It's the public's property. But that property is not being maintained by the city to the way it should be maintained. There were some improvements that were built with the condo complex for these two units, and then also the one to the left of it, that those need to be maintained. This is a mechanism for those improvements to be maintained in perpetuity, and they report to us every year that they've maintained them. And so there's a mechanism to get this maintenance done. So in essence, what they're doing, that's kind of their use fee to be able to do this. They're trading something for the use of this. That's at least the way staff was seeing it. So the, the public is getting...
And there are other encroachments that other people have throughout the city that do enjoy a, a portion of that. So it's not necessarily precedent-setting. We've already have, I mean, that's essentially what the encroachment permit process is utilized for. In this case, we're, we're looking at a way to, to put in obligations so that they don't get it for free and it's not a gift of public funds.
But then what happens if the utilities need to get dug up and the supports are in the way?
So that's part of the risk that the property owner takes, is we can tell them that we're going to have a major project going there, or there's additional utilities, and you would have to, you know, remove that or at least help us get the utilities through there, okay? And we have looked...
The agreement actually provides that we would, that they have to either post a bond or deposit to cover the cost of allowing us to get there, to get access to our lives. That's part of the encroachment permit.
Right.
So for each one of these, that we make a recommendation to move forward, we've looked at, you know, what potential utilities are there and what we could do. For example, the sewer line there, we think that our next project is to line that sewer. And that, that would happen back at East Whitley through a manhole, and then it would push it all the way down the hill. So we really wouldn't need as much access to get on that very sloped piece of ground to get that done. It would be minor access. But there should still be maintained public access for people to be able to walk through that area.
Does the applicant want to say anything?
I want to thank the staff that really worked with us over the past few years to trying to figure out a pathway to this process. In terms of the construction that has to occur now, just to clarify, there is no lower deck. We actually have no access down to this area of the property because we're sandwiched in the middle between the two other units. And so this actually will allow us to get some access down there so we can actually do the maintenance. And the actual construction that occurs... And the actual construction that occurs as a result of issuing this permit is actually laying the boards to extend, extend the existing deck that's there, the second deck that's there. There's no other construction that, other than associated with the maintenance plan that actually will occur now in the city right-of-way.
And just for quick clarification, how far is it extending out onto the city right-of-way?
There's, there's, there's actually a drawing in the thing that shows all of the units. I mean, some, some are, have much more encroachment than mine. It kind of angles off as you go down the street.
Yeah, it looks like it's approximately, it's hard to tell on this, about four feet on one area.
And now we have Doug Otto coming up, representation for the family.
What'd you say?
Oh, no, Doug Otto just handed, or something.
He's just giving you the drawing. Happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah. So, it was four feet to what, how much? Mr. Greenlaw?
So, if you refer to, let's see, the page, sorry, this, being, everything being eight and a half by 11, it'd be better if we had an exhibit that showed the 24 by 36. But you can see that it's in the range of five something feet there. So, you, you see the property, the property line is 15 feet is the width of the alley of the city's land. And that left-hand corner of that rectangle, and you can see that other dash line. So, it's the dash, two dots and a dash, that's the right-of-way line. And then the same thing up above that. And then there's a line there, an arrow that shows that it's 15 feet. And as you go over to the right side there, you can see the furthest corner in, encroaching in there. And, you know, it's approximately a third of the way. And I can go get the exact dimension.
It, it looks like at the largest, it's approximately four feet, two inches.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Okay. The hesitations that I brought up, and I appreciate the homeowners' want to do this and the desire to do this, and I know it's been a long process of getting through these plans and getting through this with both planning commission and then COVID and then council now. The concern I have and the hesitation I have is the concern that Cindy mentioned. Having seen kind of just, I know that we're doing repairs and Bob mentioned sliplining, but it's always the, it seems to be the way that often the space that you think is going to be okay and gets fixed ends up needing repairs. And Michael saw that this weekend with stuff. And it's happening, it happens, it happens with the age of the pipes we have in town. My hesitation is that the, not only the homeowner, but the city may involve into great cost having to remove some or all of that portion of work to be able to fix things in that region. I don't know if it makes sense to try to do preventative work first in the area and then move forward with the project to be able to ensure that, that it, that it doesn't happen right away. My hesitation is in, to be fair, the encroachment permit process in general right now and looking at that full process and looking at the idea of a five-year encroachment with extensions. I think I would prefer to see it managed by the city with some type of system for outreach similar to like Michael had talked about with like the business license where it becomes an annual thing that has to be updated. I don't know that I want to put the impetus on the resident to have to do that. I think it's worth the city making sure that we're actually doing an active check of the area annually and having that happen. I do have some hesitation in terms of how on top of everyone, all of those houses already are. And having those balconies then extend into some of that space that allows for separation, making them even closer to the properties nearby. I know the height differential is something that is good in that space, so it's not as significant as it would be down the line in some places. But yes, I do think it could be precedent-setting if we're allowing for this to happen in one spot. The precedent is there to allow it again. And some of those other spaces don't allow for that. So, that has me slightly concerned. And then looking at some of the issues brought up in a number of communications regarding water flow and mud flow, I hope that we have some rainy seasons again. I know that that's not the case right now and so it's very easy to kind of brush that aside right now. But if this is going in for at least five years with the goal of having it be extended for quite some time, with the length of the property, I would assume, that has to be something that comes under review. So, I'm not sure where that puts me right now, but those are just some of the, some of where I'm at right now.
Well, when you talk about all of that, if I was the property owner, I would go, why do I even want to deal with this? Because it's going to be expensive.
Right.
I'm, I'm assuming there's some kind of a cost, like between the insurance and the bond and then the, and the improvements that you're going to have to make. I don't think that's a, that's a cheap deal. I mean, I mean, do we have any idea what we're talking, and then if all of a sudden they need, we need that, we need to open up that property?
So, a lot of those improvements were put in when initially when the condos were built, okay? But they haven't been maintained to the level that we want. And they're full of silt, so the drainage does not work. So, all the drainage from East Whitley finds its way down the side of the house and it finds its way down to the back and then finds its way down to Whitley. And what we're trying to accomplish is keeping that maintained from those impacts initially when all those condos were built and now finding its way, the drainage down to Whitley. The city will have to work on that one drainage line that we have down in the lower property there that goes out to East Whitley, and we'll take care of that this summer.
But they're going to be dealing with all the silt and all this stuff.
They have to remove that and they have to certify their removal. It's not that we're not going to be looking at it, but what we want is anybody that has this, they have to send this in and say, I've done this to this level, to this as-built plan, and I've maintained it. And they certify that. And then we can go do our checks to make sure that that's happening. But those property owners are maintaining it to that level as they have finished up. Right now, what you have, an existing condo complex, it's not maintaining what's there. Now, we're saying by agreement and to the standards we have set, that you need to maintain this. And it's very clear what, what that maintenance will, what we want. Otherwise, the encroachment goes away.
Right.
And those improvements are detailed, one in, in the plan, and they will be updated with as-built. So, after, after those improvements have been made, we're requiring a submittal to basically codify what was actually built is actually there. And then it's referenced back to the landscape maintenance agreement as an exhibit. So, essentially what we would have would be the encroachment permit, the landscape maintenance agreement, and then a set of as-bills detailing out all the improvements that were, were there and that are required to be maintained. And so, when we send John over there as part of his normal inspections to go and, and check on it periodically, we'd be able to, to verify that as well.
And the soil and structural report has to come in as well.
That would-
One of the first things, probably.
That, that's correct. We would require that prior to the issuance of any building permit.
And then just a question also, Michael, on the surety bond and having that in place. The surety bond, I believe, is by the individual, not tied to the home, right? That would be required to be kept up by the home, the property owner?
Property owner, that's correct.
Okay. I mean, I think if, if this were to move forward, that the encroachment permit also should be by the owner and not the property, that they would need to have some level of transfer and similar to what we're talking about with the CUPs. And having that be something that is part of the agreement for transfer of sale, that if that were to take place, that they would need to be reminded of that, have the same surety bond purchased by that property owner, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. And Doug Otto?
Good afternoon, evening, members of the council and Mayor Marshall. My name is Doug Otto. I represent Geraldine Natsen and her husband, John Mulvey, with regard to this project, which we have been working on for a couple of years now. And I guess what I wanted to communicate was our gratitude to the staff, both Mr. Greenlaw and Mr. Palmer, trying to work through the issues here. What we were told several years ago before I became involved in this project was, we don't feel comfortable because we're not sure that these things are going to be to the benefit of the city. And when we gave you a permit, what we need to do is to make sure that there's some advantage to the city. And therefore, the landscape maintenance agreement came into existence. There are three houses, condos, that are there. The, my clients are willing to take responsibility in essence for that entire area. The city does not have to do anything that it is in their general plan and we're responsible for all of that. And as the agreement indicates, that if there's a problem, that this can be revoked. You know, we're, we're indemnifying you and, and we're, we're doing everything that we can. This is, in my opinion, a real benefit to the city of Avalon because what happens is that they no longer have to worry about this except once, once it's self-certified to go out and say, well, this isn't it and we have enforcement mechanisms and we have all kinds of ways that we, we are enjoying the benefit of what my clients are willing to do to make this successful. If you know the land, the property there, it's out over an area that's pretty much uninhabitable. We're going to make improvements so that is, it is inhabitable. We're going to keep it cleaned out. We're going to work with the city on a regular basis and we're going to assume all that responsibility. That's what's happened in the last year or so. And that's why we decided that it was worth doing this again. This, this is not a huge deck. This is just a four-foot encroachment into a, an area of the city that it's not nearly as much as, as, as other properties throughout the city and even in this very area. And so, their willingness to undertake these responsibilities, to take the burden off the city of having to do this is what we thought was a good compromise to, to go with this, so.
Great. Thank you. Also, I'm, I'll tell you, you have any comments?
Nope.
Okay. Cindy?
Well, I, I think we are, I'm assuming that we have some public comments, that I kind of want to hear those before I weigh in.
Sure.
The city had received two letters, I believe Denise had mentioned this earlier, two written communications. Council does have this as part of their packet. Both letters were in opposition. I have no other comments that have come through here unless there's anybody outside.
She'll be outside, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who, I only received one letter.
Richard Warner, number one.
Yeah.
And then Rose Marie Cox.
I didn't receive that.
That was a, that was a late email this afternoon.
So, she's basically saying she's got a large, large amount of mud seeping into my yard from above during rainy season, even though I have a high wall. My neighbor Kirk Cameron has a shorter wall and is directly behind the pending project, thus at greater risk once the easement has been undermined.
Huh, I didn't get that.
So, we either need to, excuse me, we either need to have a copy of that provided to the council member Cassidy now or read it into the record.
That's okay.
I, I can send it to you. I can also read it into record, whichever you prefer, Scott.
It's very short.
So, I just, a little clarification, on the downside of the property where they were talking, those property owners are, there is a concrete, concreted swale, a grouted swale. And now it's full of dirt and the anticipation is that this would be maintaining that. And so, it'd probably remove at least two feet of soil in there right now. So, then that would allow that, you know, throughout the winter to be maintained.
Right.
And then I guess my other question for just the council's discussion would be, what are we, we've had some interest, I know from at least one of the other homeowners in the area that had expressed interest in having access or maintaining from their side of, you know, from behind their house to be able to encroach. So, that's where I said originally about, are we setting a precedent and are we feeling, is, you know, does the council feel comfortable with allowing other people to kind of encroach on the city's property? Because I think if we do allow this and this does go forward, then we're going to hear from others as well.
And then that'll just be on a case-by-case basis. I mean, we've been put into this situation before where we're worried about a precedent. And I just think that's where we just need to, to look at them. I mean, I, I'm understanding the public benefit to this and it sounds like we're not doing anything with that property. And it's got all that silt or whatever that this lady's complaining about, well, it's not going to be a problem. The bummer will be if they don't maintain it, we're going to be getting the calls from the property owners that are saying, wait a minute, you said they're supposed to maintain it and they haven't kept it clean. But that's going to be for city staff to deal with. I don't know. I mean, hopefully we do have rain and that kind of thing and so that will happen. But they're going to be, and hopefully, I don't know if you all live here full-time, I don't have any idea of how you would even know if stuff starts to happen, if you want to come up and speak to that. Because I'm sorry, I don't know who you are. So, I don't know how we would know unless the neighbors start complaining that the, that it's looking bad. Can you respond to that? Please?
Yes, I'm still working. My husband is retired, so he's here more often than I am, unfortunately. He's at, at least here every month. And he generally comes over to do work on projects. So, and probably because of the challenge of getting into this area, I probably have our contractor, you know, someone under contract to actually do the, the periodic maintenance because it is a little bit challenging to get to the spot.
Yeah, no doubt, yeah. Okay.
You have my honest commitment that we will follow through on the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just mention, there are actually two agreements here. The first agreement is the encroachment agreement. And that's the agreement that allows them to encroach upon the city's property. And in that agreement, we set forth that they have to make a deposit or, or post a bond of the amount to remove this in case something, in case we need access. The second agreement is the landscape maintenance agreement. And that agreement is one that our office drafted that provides that there are certain improvements that they have to do and maintain on this property. And that gives us another right to enforce their obligations. And that requires, again, if we have to, if for some reason they don't and we do it, they have to pay us to maintain it. So, it's, it's a very strong agreement in favor of the city to enforce it. So, you've got the encroachment permit and then you've got the landscape agreement as well. Plus, you have the conditions of approval that were put on by the planning commission when they granted the variance.
Okay. Any comments, Michael, coming through?
I've received no comments.
And is there any mechanism if for some reason in between the first five years of that encroachment agreement is not being met, to be able to end the agreement early?
Yes, I missed that last part.
It's 30-day, I think.
It's a, but it's, it's 30 days during the first five years?
Yes, right.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to make certain that council or Mayor Portman Cassidy has received the written correspondence she had not received earlier. Okay, because again, I want to make certain that the public comments are being received by the deciding body. So, she's indicated that she has, so that's great. Thank you.
I just sent it, yeah.
And Rose Marie's last name isn't Cox.
Yeah, I, no, I did receive that. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the encroachment permit for the structure at 383 East Whitley. Authorize the city manager to execute the landscape maintenance agreement and authorize city staff to negotiate with the property owners to determine the amount of the required bond and liability insurance. So, let me ask a question. If there's no second, this dies and what happens?
If, if the encroachments aren't provided, they wouldn't- If the encrochements aren't provided, they would be required to remove the structures that are already existing, that are currently encroaching on there. And they would either have to shorten it and remove it from the city property, or remove it altogether.
There's a motion. Well, if there is no second, I guess I can't ask why you all, what your concern is. Can I ask that? And I guess you don't have to respond if you don't want to, but it...
Ask, you can ask that, but council does not require to provide their reasons.
Okay. Well, there's a motion, and there's, go ahead, Cindy.
I mean, I just, you know, I'm really struggling for this, because it would be great for the city to have that maintained, which is something that both, or three different surrounding neighbors have concerns about, the fact that it's not being maintained. So I think that would be really good for the city. So that makes me want to vote in favor. But honestly, all of the surrounding homeowners have either spoken or written a letter in opposition of it. So I kind of am stuck in the sense that, you know, it's the same as like a CUP. If everybody around it doesn't want it, then, you know, is it fair to just override that? I mean, it's, you know, it's their neighborhood. So I kind of wish that we could, and that's why I wanted the council to weigh in on, you know, are we going to let everybody in the area have this opportunity to encroach on the city's property if they're willing to maintain it? If we, if the council's willing to do that, then I would be more in favor. But if it's just looking at the one property, then I just feel like it's appropriate to, you know, err on the side of all of the surrounding homeowners.
And that's where I'm leaning, Cindy, is I'd rather err on the other homeowners in the area. I like the plan they came up with, with the maintenance part of it, but, yeah, I just don't feel comfortable with the whole thing.
And just for clarity's sake, there are already properties out there that the city is investigating that are currently encroaching potentially illegally, potentially legally, in that area, so...
And that's something we're going to have to deal with. It's, I think the city needs to be a little bit more forceful in what our ordinances are, and how we go about fixing that. When I was formerly on the city council, we had an issue with an oversized deck that I believe is still oversized, that we sued the homeowner for. And it's still there. I mean, we need to, at some point, stick to our guns as to what our ordinances are.
And Richard Warner's letter, I mean, after the, and I'm sure Richard is watching, I hope fully he is, and Mrs. Warner, but, you know, if this precedent is allowed to continue, then how do you deny every other property owner whose property lines abuts the 15-foot alleyway the same entitlement of encroaching into city easement? Well, I think you all have, I think staff has answered that really well. I mean, we would look at all of those and have these kinds of mitigations and liabilities or whatever in place to take care of that. So, and I'm not sure what Mr. Warner's main concern is, is that, oh, it's just a precedent. But I mean, after knowing that this area is going to be cleaned up and could be better for the city, that is where I'm like, great. And this isn't, this isn't large expense to these folks. I mean, they're not coming in here, you know, putting a $50 bill on this to take care of the problem. And for a four-foot encroachment, it, and then, okay, so now what's going, so now, like you say, we're going to go back and look at all of these, and we're going to go, "Oh, well, we didn't approve theirs." So all of you, your house has been there for 40 years, you got to take that deck away. Were you going to do that? I don't know. So I think to look at each of them on an individual basis, and then go back, if they're illegal, then we'd have to go through the same process, come up with the same, all these same mitigations, and expense to those folks, and that's fine. And then, if they don't want to play, then they remove it. But I think they're straightforward, and how, and the staff has been straightforward, and how we can make this plan work, improve the city property, we still have access if we need it. So, anyway.
Mayor Marshall.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Otto.
The last hearing on this was three years ago. And the testimony at this hearing is that there were two letters that were written, but the representations made that nobody in the area likes it. And what I would suggest was that we put this over for a month and try and get contemporary information. I know that some of the properties adjacent even have changed hands, and I don't know that those people are against this. And this would give us a chance to work and find out whether it's true that other people there. There's only three properties, you know, right there, but if we could, if we have a chance to work with the neighbors and find out what the concerns are, I think that would be fair to everybody, because I'm unprepared to address the idea that nobody in the neighborhood likes it without talking to the people. It's been a long time, and I don't think there's any downside risk to do that. So that would be my suggestion.
And in the meantime, we would be looking at all those other properties. Does that give us enough time, Michael, to look at all those other properties, to see if they're legal or not? Can you do that in a month?
We'll try and get as far as we can.
I mean, if you want to make it to...
And I'll just say that I've spoken to two of the homeowners that were not persons who wrote letters, who were, so essentially, I came armed to this meeting with four different homeowners in the surrounding area. But I always appreciate the idea of, especially with how our council is feeling, of the idea to hold it over for one month. So I would certainly make a motion to hold over this item until the second meeting in June, or the first meeting in July.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I'd be in support of that, yeah. I would second that.
If that's a motion, then there's a second, and thank you for your suggestion. Okay, shall we, are you going to take the real call, Michael?
I will.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Magugan-Cassidy? Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
So, motion passes. I'm going to go grab Denise.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming over. Doug, it's nice to see you. We'll see you in your other role. And when Denise comes back, we will go to item number eight. And thank you, Arn. It's a hold. The chili? Oh my God, Cindy, you bent over, and your shoulders were there, and your head was gone. That was scary. You're on mute, I'm sorry.
So, item number eight is the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Avalon revising Article 6 of Chapter 3 of Title IX for planning and zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code, amending the definition of minor renovation to reduce the threshold to allow certain minor projects be administratively processed. At the regular city council meeting back in November of 2016, city council had established a policy to allow some minor renovations, including temporary uses, be approved administratively by staff. The current municipal code at the time was then amended to allow for administrative approval of minor renovation projects, and the definition of minor renovation was added to the municipal code, and it required 12 requirements. Following a public meeting discussion on how the municipal code defines and applies those minor renovation projects at the regular planning commission meeting on March 17th of this year, the planning commission had directed staff to bring back an amendment to the municipal code to revise and essentially loosen those requirements for how we define minor renovations. Specifically, they had requested to remove requirements D, E, H, and J, which was indicated in the staff report through, by strike-through lettering from the definition listed below. And really, the biggest hang-up was, it was perceived by the planning commission as cumbersome and prohibitive, and costing a lot of money towards businesses looking to make relatively minor changes to their location. And so, the definition had required strict adherence to meet all 12 of those requirements. The ones that they want to remove specifically includes taking out the requirement that the project does not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than 25% of the floor area of any commercial or multi-unit residential structure. Conversely, the same for a single-family residential structure, although that original threshold was 50%. They had also recommended striking out that the project does not alter more than 20% of any side or roof of the structure, and that no minor renovation project had been approved or conditionally approved to the site that's subject to the application within a 12-month period immediately preceding the application. The planning commission subsequently adopted a resolution at its regular planning commission meeting on April 21st of this year, recommending that city council adopt the ordinance to making the amendments to the municipal code, and that ordinance is here before the city council for consideration. And so, with that, that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Just a quick question. These revisions, did they just come out of the planning commission thinking about this? Or is this coming down from some other agency saying we need to streamline our process?
No, this was, there have been a couple, there's a couple of things behind this. One was, I don't know if the city was always of the same interpretation of how to apply this definition to minor projects. And so, there, with the change in people over the planning department, there was an adherence to carrying out the municipal code. The other part of that, too, is these relatively minor projects, which really could be approved at the administration, at the administrative level, was requiring these projects to go through and get a site plan, which also included some other things. And so, it was becoming pretty cost-prohibitive for a lot of, a lot of businesses looking to make some very minor changes to that. And so, the discussion that was happening at the planning commission was, in part, trying to find better ways to encourage businesses to seek out minor improvements, because there's a direct benefit to the community. The other part of that was to empower the planning staff to make those approvals, knowing that there's been some changes within the planning department, especially with the addition of John Gilbert, who brings a wealth of knowledge to building codes and plan check reviews and ADA compliance. And so, we've got a lot more in-house capacity than we ever did prior to that. And so, there's still a need for, obviously, for projects to get to the planning commission level, but those that are minor, and the ones that they're really more focused on, two projects come to mind, which was the renovations that are currently taking place at the Catalina Island Inn, and then the recent dive shop. A lot of those are more cosmetic in nature, and aren't really necessarily at the scope. But the threshold that's stipulated in the minor project definition is what is triggering people to come in, because you can't just meet one or two of those. You have to meet all 12 of those regulations. And if you don't, then it triggers planning commission approval.
Okay. And the 70 square feet or more, the 70 square feet or more, is that kind of that whole bedroom size?
Essentially, the logic there was, at 70 square feet or more, what they don't want to see are constructions of buildings, I mean, bedrooms, and other things that would fundamentally change the structure, and adding square footage. So they recommended keeping that one in, and only removing those that were impacting the trend of a lot of projects that were looking for those very minor rehabs.
Okay. Michael, do you have any comments on your machine?
I have not received any comments.
And council?
I mean, I watched both discussions of the planning commission going through this, and it made a lot of sense. And the part that I kept having to remind myself, because at first it felt like we were just removing the brakes from our vehicle, but then realizing it doesn't mean that they're not getting both reviewed by administrative staff, and also by the planning director, the inspector, the building inspector.
Yeah.
All of that is still in place. So I support their effort to try to make this both a less expensive and an easier process to get through.
Okay. Is there a, so this little thing we got here, the agenda item, first reading, da-da-da-da-da, register to speak, so these people, so this isn't happening? Is that what that means?
It was on the back of that.
Oh, it's the beach dining on the other side. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't see the, I didn't turn it over. Okay, never mind. Okay, so there's...
So I would move to...
Energy's?
Yep. Where are we at here?
Alter. Introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon revising Article 6 of Chapter 3 of Title IX, planning and zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code, amending the definition of minor renovation to reduce the threshold to allow certain minor projects be administratively processed.
Seconded.
Then second, and no comments. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes and one absent. Councilmember De La Rosa.
Item number nine. Do we, are we good? Do we need a break for two minutes?
Okay, yes, can we?
Yes.
Thank you for asking.
Okay. We cooking? Okay. All right, item number nine.
Number nine is an update on the outdoor dining during our COVID restrictions and as we near June 15th and opening everything up. As you know, Devin Hart works in the admin world with me. She is my right hand, my strong right hand besides Michael. And her and I have been working very closely since the beginning of outdoor dining. So, I've asked her to provide the PowerPoint presentation to you this evening and she's going to lead you right through all the questions you need to answer.
Perfect. Thank you, Devin. Welcome.
Good evening, city council. So, today we're here to talk about these items regarding outdoor dining. The outdoor dining program by the city was implemented on July 1st, 2020, and officially approved by the city council on July 7th. It provided no charge for, charges for businesses using our public beaches or areas of the public right-of-way to provide relief for these restaurants during COVID restrictions that prohibited indoor dining. They also provided options for visitors and residents to eat and also a very unique and special dining experience. To date, we've had 13 businesses participate in the program. You can see by location, we've had five, five locations that have been utilized, city beaches and areas of the public right-of-way. In parentheses next to each business location, that's the original amount of tables that each business was approved for in that location. On March 16th, 2021, city council approved the city staff implement a tiered approach to reducing that number of tables utilized by the businesses. By the corresponding tier, the indoor dining was opened. So, right now, we're in the yellow tier, indoor dining's at 50%. So, those businesses are requested to reduce the numbers of tables on the beaches at this time by half. There's some logistics that are in place outside of the city permit. The businesses are required by the alcoholic beverage, by the ABC, to receive a special license that expands their licensed footprint. Those are part of the ABC's regulatory relief program that was implemented on May 15th, 2020. Those are all just temporary relief programs. On the ABC's website, they indicate that they'll, they can withdraw that relief at any time, providing just 10 days' notice to license holders. The city permitting process involves lighting for businesses upon request, a program by which we approved heaters for use and then store those heaters additionally on the public right-of-way. Trash is, maintaining the beaches is mostly the responsibility of the businesses. And the location and number of tables permitted was, and setup time and removal times were all set up by city staff and city council and approved by the city manager. As I mentioned, on March 16th, we began reducing the number of tables out there. Currently, we're at 50%. On June 15th, we anticipate the end of all of our COVID-19 restrictions and the end of restrictions on indoor dining. So, at this time, city staff are proposing to reduce, but not eliminate, the program, mostly out of a need to accommodate beachgoers interested in using the beaches for recreational Just a few additional details. Pending city council approval, city staff would like to start having the local businesses remove their heaters and propane tanks off the public right-of-ways effective on Saturday, May 21st, May 22nd, 2021. Just so that way, we can start getting the areas ready for our big Memorial Day weekend or anticipating lots of visitors and would like those off the beaches so they can be utilized for recreational use at that time. City staff would, are proposing in our, in the staff report and in this presentation that we continue using outdoor dining, but by a special event permitting process, so it'd be on an occasional basis and not a consistent basis. This would all be subject to ABC and LA County Department of Public Health licensing and permitting processes. So, if at any time, the ABC were to rescind their regulatory relief, the businesses would be responsible for getting some other type of ABC license in order to provide service on the beaches. Additionally, if the public health department, previously they had like a temporary food facility permits, we might have to, those types of permits and licenses would supersede whatever city staff decides to permit. Oh, and just a quick comment. City staff right now, on our current permit applications, we just have the businesses check a box indicating that they've received all the required licensing and permits from LA County Public Health, as well as the ABC, but city staff doesn't actually double-check or require copies of any of that permitting. Moving forward in the process, in order to make sure that the businesses were accurately permitted, that process would be just slightly more rigid and the businesses would be required to provide that documentation. So, the staff proposal right now is to eliminate all outdoor dining on city-owned beaches and public right-of-ways, including that along Catalina, Sumner, and Creston Avenue between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. So, we would strictly adhere to no setup on any of our beaches or public right-of-ways before 5:30 PM. We would continue that, outdoor dining then after 5:30 PM setup on specific dates to be approved by council. And you guys could do it as often or as limited as you would like. And city staff would request or recommend that specific dates wouldn't be made unavailable, including the Fourth of July and perhaps even Memorial Day. Permits, the permit would delineate the specific area for use. It would also establish a fee to be set by city council that will go to support the general fund, to help support our pest baitment program, as well as to offset administrative and public works demands. The permit could limit the total number, the licensing permitting process would limit the total number of permits available to each establishment on any specific day. For example, 10 tables for business XYZ on Friday. There's a couple of different fee structures that are, have been proposed. The first fee structure is on a per-table basis. Staff proposes the use fee be on a per-table basis and that the initial fee be established at $200 per table, per day. So, business XYZ who wants 10 tables on Friday, June 18th, the fee for those 10 tables on the beach on Friday would be $200. If they wanted every Friday in the month of July, that would be $1,000. The tables could be turned over as often as business permits without any additional fee to the city. It'd be a very simple way for city staff to audit and keep track. And the fee can also be passed on to the guests sitting at the table as like an outdoor seating surcharge. And as I mentioned, the fee would go into our general fund to help support the permitting process, oversight, lighting, utility use for string lights and everything out there and to help keep the area maintained. Alternatively, there's a fee proposal based on a square footage basis. All of the city leases currently are on a square footage basis. A standard city lease utilizes $3.25 for all exterior areas per square foot. And I provide a couple of examples, so there are places familiar to us, so you can get an idea of the relative square footage. The Pancake Cottage's small patio that's boxed in by that wrought iron is 56 square feet. That monthly rent is $182. The Naughty Fox has 350 square feet and that comes out to $1,137.50. And the Avalon Girl has about 870 square feet for a monthly fee of just over $2,800. Calculating the fee based on square footage will be slightly more difficult to enforce and audit for city staff and code enforcement, but the square footage rate can be charged daily or monthly or at a rate to be determined by city council. As I mentioned, it's easier to calculate and pass on the fee to, on a per-table basis. Additionally, it may encourage businesses to be more thoughtful in the amount of tables they put on the beaches. If they know that they're paying for each table, you won't have a scene where you see a bunch of tables out there that no one's occupying. I know I walked down the street on Mother's Day and there were 28 people, tables on the beach. It was a cloudy, cold day. So, those tables sat mostly empty on Middle Beach for almost three hours. But if we, if y'all chose the square footage basis, that, that area would include, then all areas not available to the public. So, that's a pro on that. So, now it's council direction time. We can, city staff is amenable to anything city council would like to direct us to do. We just provided some simple questions, you know, would you like to continue with the program at all? You know, if you do, how often would you like it occurring? Do you have specific dates or times in mind? Any other limitations? And I'm here if you have any questions. And if not, then I'll sit down.
But you could be ready to stand anyway.
All right.
Can you, we have that last, can somebody, that last screen for those like questions?
Sure. That's about it.
So, we're anticipating that all restrictions are going to be lifted June 15th and we'll be back to 100% capacity in-house, correct?
I, oh, sorry.
We don't have a 100% answer to that, Cindy. We are assuming and we've looked, we can't get, find an answer to that. Other than what the governor has said and.
Right.
So, if there's still going to be a limitation into the number of people they're allowing in a restaurant, I can't answer if that's going to happen or not.
I asked the question of county staff today just to see if they had heard anything regarding that. And they were also extremely hesitant to agree that 100% was possible after June 15th, that they were hopeful that it would be less restrictive, but would not say that there would be no restrictions.
All just, I would like to see some form of outdoor dining be maintained. I'm not sure of the size and scope, but, and for dinner only, on our sand parks. Because I have a different thought on maybe public easements on Crescent or, what's the, what's the, what's the public easement on Catalina? That would be like.
That's the lobster trap.
Lobster trap.
Sidewalk.
Okay. Okay. I, I don't personally have a problem with, with, with a little bit of Crescent activity during the day even, during lunchtime, but very, perhaps very limited, but I don't know. I am in favor of some sort of a fee schedule and, so anyway. So, I guess the question is, after June 15th, maybe the first question to answer, do we want to keep some kind of outdoor dining or do we want it to go away? So, that's, let's see if, what kind of, what we kind of feel about that.
I'm in favor of outdoor dining continuing as long as there is a, and without fees, as long as there is a restriction on the number of people that can be in a restaurant indoors. So, as long as the restriction for less than 100% capacity continues, I would expect that we would be allowing restaurants to have some level of capacity on the beaches, measure it with what that percentage is. So, they cut the original tables down by half when it went to 50%. I'm assuming June 15th is going to bring either a 75% or 100% if we're lucky, but I would think 75% and a step to 100 a few weeks later, I'm going to guess right after Fourth of July, because that's how the county has been implementing things, is after the holiday, right?
Right.
So, but I would assume that if, if there was a restriction in place requiring less than 100% dining, that at that point, the goal is to try to support restaurants in being able to provide food for the residents and the guests and that we shouldn't be charging a fee until that restriction is gone.
But you're saying at 100%, no more outdoor dining?
I think at 100%, I would love to see outdoor dining continue for dinner, especially during the high season. I don't know about lunch, so we can talk about that later, but I'm not really sure that that's where we want to go with that.
Not on the beaches?
Not on the beaches necessarily, perhaps in the public right-of-way because it's not blocking egress, it's not blocking people. But that, at that point, when we get to 100%, then looking at what that fee structure would be, and we can discuss that tonight, but, but I think at that point, it becomes the choice to have additional tables in addition to what you have inside. It makes a little more sense. We can look at what the rates are and things like that, but.
Okay. And our fire chief is here.
I would just like to add, if we go to 100% or if we're even at 80, 90%, we need to look at the number of tables that are allowed on the beach, because when those go in at night, that's more of a hazard for my guys.
Right.
So, we just need to keep, I don't want that many tables out there with 100% or 90% because then all that has to go inside where.
Right.
Oh, exactly. About what the level is allowed right now.
Yes. Totally get it, yeah. Okay, chief, you learned from your chief, didn't you?
I can add a couple of comments.
Go ahead. Go, Cindy.
I'm, I, I think I'm in line with Lisa's comments that as long as we have restrictions, we should, I don't believe we should be charging a fee at such point as the restrictions go away if that's June 15th, if that's what it ends up being, then I do believe we should charge a fee. I like the idea of a per-table fee and a maximum number of tables per restaurant. And I like the idea of having outdoor dining through the season. I also, looking at the pictures and having spent some time downtown, I don't think it's an imposition to have the heaters the way that I've seen them sort of stacked around. I, I don't think we should require them to be moved on the 22nd of May, where, as we all know, June gloom, it's cold, it's cold at night still and certainly through the dinner hour. So, if, you know, if we, I would agree to allow the restaurants to keep the heaters out until, say, June 30th, but I can certainly understand as we get into the Fourth of July weekend, that is when we start to get a lot warmer and, so there's that. And I, the, sorry, I, I'm not in favor of the outdoor dining on this, on the beaches for lunches. But if something else comes to fruition at another council meeting, that would be a different discussion. But I think as we start, we're already seeing a tremendous influx of visitors and so I don't, I don't think that we should be allowing, we should be allowing the lunchtime activity. And I also like staff. And I also liked staff's idea of shifting that timeframe to six o'clock. I, I think that works more in favor for the later summer hours. It's sunnier a lot later as well, so it seems easier to do that. So those are my preliminary comments and I would love to, I'm sure Annie, you're already going to do this, but if we have any of the restaurateurs in, in-house, I would love to hear from them.
Right. I know we have, Steve Bray is the only gentleman here, and I don't know if we have other people on the comment.
I have one comment.
Do you want to read that one just to get us started?
Sure. So the comment that came through came from Adam Thorick. He writes, "The beach dining has been one of the greatest experiences for our visitors. All our patrons absolutely love it and they continue to ask for it. Our location at the end of South Beach, we have little to none, none sunbathers and beachgoers. We have never had a problem with visitors using the beach during dining. We ask that the city continue to allow our restaurants to use the beach. This unique and special dining experience should be kept going. It would be terrible to see it go. Endemic fish house."
Right. Okay, thank you, Adam. I, I'm just going to back up on a couple of things that Cindy said before Steve comes up. I'm a little bit concerned, Memorial Day is going to be busy. I'm a little bit concerned about those heaters being on the beach for Memorial Day. I know there was a wind and one, some were tied behind, around a tree and they, and they fell over. So as much beach space, I think, well, number one, I guess the question is, are we going to allow beach dining for lunch on Memorial Day weekend? And I think the answer to me should be no, because it's way too busy unless we could come up with just a couple little tables here. I mean nighttime, but maybe not lunch over Memorial Day weekend. And maybe the heaters aren't a big deal. My chief could maybe talk about that. I do believe at some point we should start to establish some kind of a fee because we do have a bird abatement that's going to cost us $10,000 between now and the end of June and our budget still isn't fat. Those trash cans, I know Eddie's, you know, his, his contract is, I know that everybody says, well, it's not my restaurant's fault, but if I get something to go from a restaurant, it's going to end up in our trash can. It's not going to be here. Here Maggie's, I took this to go, but here's your, here's your plates or, or whoever scoops, whomever. So there is an impact on our trash cans and again, that project is, or that contract is cut. So I would like to see even, you know, I would like to see at some point that even be increased, but, but it's going to take some revenue to do that. When you look, so you, if I'm correct, so the Avalon Grill has been paying $3,000 a month when they're not even open?
That is correct.
Okay. And they seem to manage that. And Blanca is paying and Coyote Joe's is paying. I think they, they're another one, huh? So to, to, and they're supposed to be at reduced capacity also, so I think to make, to not have these other folks pay something, I don't think is fair. Now, what that be, I don't know. I know we got a comment from Margaret that said $20 is too much, $20 a table. Well, if I, if I'm a table of six and I'm a four-top, there's a big difference in the amount, and you could put, there's a big difference in the amount of that tab, so.
But I don't, I don't think the cost is per guest at that table. It's just being able to put that table.
The clarification that Devin made about having it be for the day versus per check.
Well, I know.
I was worried it was per check too at first and I was like, that is way too high.
No, no, it's not per check, but, but if you've got, but if you've got a six-foot table and a, a four-top and a six-top, you're going to make more money on that, on that business, not for us to take more of that.
If you turn that table three times.
Exactly.
Yeah, yes.
Twenty bucks.
And you're charging the guest to use that table.
Right.
And we were just coming up with a starting point. I mean, it could be less. I wouldn't suggest anything more. It was just a, a starting point for us to consider.
No, no, and I think that, I think that's a valid, have a starting point. So assuming right now, when you said, let's say Steve has 24 tables, now he's going to go down to 12, correct? And that should have already happened or has happened, it should have already happened? And is that happening, Steve, that you've reduced your tables to 12?
Does it happen if we have 12 tables?
Is that what you're doing currently? Come up to the mic.
Hey, I'm sorry, please excuse me, I have a hearing issue and I can hear Cindy better than you folks and it's muffled, okay? So bear with me.
Okay.
And is it true that I have 12 tables?
Outside now.
Right now, actually, at this time, I have like 12 to 14 tables, but on the weekends, when there's no one, no one on the beach, and by the way, congratulations on letting us, thank you so much for letting us dine on the beach, but it's created a monster and everybody's coming over here just to dine on the beach. And with every person who complains, there's probably about 5,000 people who have said, thank you so much for letting us dine on the beach.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so we, we, actually, when the beach is not being used and there's no one on the beach, we have, we have, and I admit it, we've, we've put more tables on the beach. There's plenty of room, it's not being used. I don't see why not, why can't we have tables on the beach when there's no one on the beach? It's dark, there's no one on the, no one's using it, there's no reason. I don't understand, but at the same time, no. On, on, truthfully, on a Saturday night, I'll put easy 18 to 20 tables out there and thank you very much for adding another seven to eight people onto Steve's Steakhouse. Employed.
I'm glad you have employees.
Yes. And by the way, it's like, we have no problem. I know that the city has made, we've made money, the city's made money off the taxes. The city needs to make more money, I understand, but we need to pass that debt dollar to the people. And I do see that when you're, you want the tables on the beach a little later, that's understandable, but we're only going to get like one to two turns at the very most. And so how to pass that on to the people without being absurdly rude to them and saying, hey, it's, you know, the city needs the money and all right that, it really needs to be dropped a little bit, not from 20, it's like, hey, it's 20 bucks to sit on the beach. I mean, people are just going to go, are you kidding me?
Well, why would you, why would you even need to tell them that?
Because I've got to pass.
Avalon Grill doesn't say to their people, hey, by the way, we pay.
That's a good point. That's a good point, yeah.
So I don't think you would pay, it's just something, that's just your cost of doing business in my mind.
You're, you're right, you're right, but we are going to have to pass the buck.
However, well, maybe you are, maybe you weren't, because you're at 50% capacity inside, right? You're at 50%.
Yes.
And then you've got probably another 50 or plus percent more in, outside.
Yes, man, yes.
So you're over what you typically would be if your restaurant was totally open.
That, that's correct.
Right. So I think we've been quite generous and, and I was one of the first proponents of outdoor dining, as you know, so I think, you know, we're going all the way, but I still look at our city and go, but we've got trash and we've got bird abatement and we've got all of this other stuff that we need to be able to take care of as well.
And by, I want to make sure that we appreciate everything that you've been giving us, okay?
Yeah.
It's not that, I'm not trying to be disrespectful at all.
I know, Mike.
I, I want to make sure that I'm just trying to, to figure out how to, personally myself, how do I pass this on, you know, to the customer? And you are right, that's one thing I never even considered, but at the same time, what's going on is these people are coming over in droves right now and thank God we have the beach because they're still an hour to two-hour wait to get in to any restaurant on Fridays and Saturday nights. And these boats are not stopping and all right that, and you know, there's 50% here and 50% there and all right that, but the boats are not stopping and there is come, constantly coming over. I mean, we're trying to make sure that, I personally really care for my city, I love, I love our city and I'm asking you, it's like, let me serve these people.
Right.
You know, every restaurant is doing their due diligence on trying to make these people happy, you know, at the same time, they're waiting, they're waiting for an hour and a half, two hours and I'm, I really is try to make it a really good experience because a lot of the times it's their first time. It's an anniversary, it's a birthday, hey, it's two hours. They're really getting mad actually at Steve's Steakhouse right now because we don't take reservations and, you know, it just takes a long time to get people in and, and I'm asking the city to help us out and let us, you know, have the tables on the beach to serve all these people. I mean, we have the, we have the means to, we have, we have the employees, we have, we've practiced and practiced and we could, we could do a lot of dinners and if you want to cut us down and all right that, then the people are going to have to, are going to be, you know, stuck with maybe a burger or something like that or a piece of pizza because they can't even go out to dinner because there's, there's a line.
Okay, but let me ask a question. When you're, when you're serving outdoors, is your inside restaurant filled to capacity?
Is it filled to capacity? No, we have, our whole back room is, is for our, for all our extra tables, the chairs in the back right there, and by the way, all the stuff for Chief Allegria, all our stuff is all folding chairs and all folding tables. So what the beach takes is probably about a 100 square foot piece of our, of our back room. And then we've had to take many tables out of our rooms, out of our front room and out of the rows room for, to give it distance, but at the same time, we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on our plastic shields and all right that, and, and we have been using them. And so instead of one every, one table every eight, no, we're, we're not doing, we have shields and we're, we shield from each table to table and, and I, I really, if I didn't think it was safe, I wouldn't do it.
Oh, no, but I guess my point is that people want to eat outdoors way before they want to go upstairs and eat.
It's, it's always different. Tonight, it was outdoors and they get, and they get cold.
Yeah.
And last night, it was indoors.
Yeah.
It's, it's always different and then when it comes Friday, it's like, it's out, it's people go anywhere I can. I don't really want to wait an hour, hour and a half to get in.
Right.
It's crazy, it's crazy on the weekends.
Yeah, I know, and it's going to get crazier.
What is, what was your normal wait time on a Friday or Saturday? What was your, sorry. What was your normal wait time on a Friday or Saturday night pre-COVID?
This last weekend, it was, it was up to an hour and 15 minutes.
What about pre-COVID, before COVID? Like 45 minutes maybe, half hour?
We, actually, I can't really tell you because we took reservations and then I just say we're sold out.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And now we don't take reservations and then now we know exactly what's going on, but we really, really try to.
Yeah.
We really, really try to, to turn those tables and like I said, with respect, I, I totally get it on, on paying for the tables. I want to pay for the tables and I have a system where basically we can, you know, every time it turns and all right that, if you want to, if you want to charge every time, it's, it's not a problem. I mean, I, I have, I have the means of doing it. If you want to go for, I think that's.
Five dollars.
I saw your square footage on the Avalon Grill, that's a little bit less than what we'd be paying.
Assuming you were allowed.
Assuming we were allowed for so many tables, like I think, I think it's like 20 tables or something like that, yeah. But.
Well, and I know that the city plans on doing like movie night and things like that in the summer and then what do we do? We say, okay, this, today you can't, this is the date we're doing on a Saturday night and you can't use the.
Well, you have to consider where the movie night is and there's no one there. There's, there is no one, no one's taking that, that, the movie night is always in the front of the pavilion, right? Is, am I right?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no restaurant there.
Okay.
There's only two restaurants that, that really choose to be on the beach at night and that's the Coyote Joe, no, excuse me, Coyote Joe's, I never see there. I see Lou Alire's there with a couple of tables and I see the endemic and that's it. There's no one down there. And then I totally agree with you 100% for July 4th. There is, that, I've seen that beach every year, totally packed except last year on July 4th for everybody to sit there and watch the fireworks, but I've never seen any other gathering besides July 4th.
Right, yeah.
So I really think you should really grant this as an everyday deal except for special occasion. Memorial Day weekend, I don't, I've never seen anybody hang out, let's hang out on the beach for, no, everybody goes to the beach all day, just like everybody knows, they go to the beach, five o'clock, five thirty, they split, they go home, they shower, they start having a couple toddies and they go out to dinner.
Right, right. Yeah.
July 4th, you're right, they, they come down to the beach. That's the only time I've ever seen they come down to the beach. And, and I'm really for, you know, I'm really fighting for, for, for dining every day.
Yeah.
And actually, I am for paying, you know, a fee. I have no problem with that. And then also, when you're talking about the dining for the lunch, I choose not to dine on the beach and all right that, because I let Maggie's do it and one of our restaurants does it, that's good enough and the Galleon does it, that's, there's plenty of room on the beach for right now, although it's coming summer. Please consider around the baseline, around the whole baseline of the beach, actually right next to the sidewalk. Please consider the Serpentine Wall. Please consider on the other side of the Serpentine Wall, maybe having a certain amount of tables then because there is some high traffic in the daytime, but there is no traffic on the beach at night. And please go down and look at it. It's, there's nothing going on in the beach. If you want us to close for a couple nights, go down and look and see what's on there, there's nothing going on. And I've, I've looked at this for years and that's why I came in June and asked to be on the beach. And then basically what we created and what the people are demanding and people are coming over here just to be dining on the beach is what happened. It just turned into a monster.
Michael, you're going to slay the monster? Okay.
So the city is looking really good. I'm sure they're getting a lot of publicity on this. I know they're only getting, you know, just, you know, just, just trickles of it through the taxes right now. Yeah, let's, let's get, you know, some kind of scale, rent scale going and let's pay the rent and just to let, just the good news and wherever you put the money, it's none of my, I don't really care, just, that's what your job is, you guys do, but, but we only had, just, I just want to tell you that there was only three times last year that we had an issue with, with seagulls on the beach.
Okay.
And I did see, I did see the gentleman with the bird a couple of times and all right that, but we just had some squirt guns and they, it gets rid of them.
So a question, so let's say ABC says, no more alcohol outside your business.
I don't think that, I think that if you, it'd have to be, they'd probably ask you first, it's like, hey, are you granting this? Are you saying this is okay to, for this, for this location or that? And since we have a record of a full year of nothing happening and not drunks and being called and, and the police are constantly patrolling and all right that, I think they'd ask you and if you said, yeah, there has been, there's not been a problem, I think they would grant it.
Well, I know law enforcement has been issuing drunken publics and open containers and I think some of, some of the people in the community say, hey, when is that going to stop because that's gotten out of control with the drinking? I heard on one of the golf cart round places on a Saturday, 23 different vehicles were sent back to the post because they all had open containers. So.
Yeah, I agree.
So there's a lot, it's, it's kind of rampant right now.
It's, it's been a little different since none of the bars have been open. I'm sure there's been a lot more calls at all the rental houses and all right that because you can't go out. I know I've experienced them next door to me, but as far as our, as far as our record for Steve's Steakhouse and Maggie's Blue Rose, I think we're looking pretty good and I want to definitely get a, get a, a big shout out to the law enforcement. And I know people sort of say stuff like, hey, they're not there, they, they're there and I'm there five days a week and they're there all the time. As a matter of fact, when I just left the steakhouse just now, they're, they're downtown.
Yeah, good.
So they are doing a really good job. I just want to give them a shout out.
Yeah, awesome.
And I do understand what they're doing and I think it's great that they're starting to enforce because no one's, no one, you know, they haven't, it wasn't being as enforced as it is now and in, you know, times have changed and it's time to get back to normal and I'm for it 100%.
Yeah.
And maybe I totally agree if they're going to have to-go stuff and all right that, no more booze.
Yeah. But if they said no more alcohol, what would that do to your beach dining?
The beach dining? It wouldn't be appeasable. There's more money being made in alcohol, selling alcohol, wine and just martini compared to a steak and especially right now with all the prices going like sky-high and meat and fish and all right that, we really need that alcohol.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I don't know if it would be worth it to, to have that on the, on the beach.
Right, okay, yeah.
Mayor, I just did a quick number, so if they did $5 a table and Steve said he had like 12 tables out tonight in the month, it would be $1,680 if, if he did it seven nights a week.
Right, right. Well, and I think, I don't want a night, I know you say you're capable of checking how things are done. I don't want a nightmare for finance to say, okay, we only put four tables out today, but we put 12 out this day.
I understand and I totally understand and actually, I'm for per-table.
Yeah, but I think.
Actually, I'm for both of them.
Yeah, I just think it would be a standard number, so it's not four this week and 10.
I would like the same. I would like the same amount of tables be granted, especially and for July and August.
Right.
It is so busy every night, seven nights a week. It's busier than heck.
Right.
And then it could be revisited in September when people have gone back to school and write that, where we'd say, hey, we'd want a little, probably want a little less or something, little less tables or all right, that. But if I had 100 tables on the beach, I could, I could, I could fill every 100 tables, all 100 tables up every night in July and August.
Right.
No problem. But I can't, I can't do it.
Okay. Another question. Is the spacing right now still six feet between tables?
I believe it's eight feet.
Or eight feet, eight feet between tables? Because I still, I know you say people don't go to the beach, but I see a lot of encroachment this way where people do feel a little pushed to the wall, to that, to where it drops down to the ocean.
Okay, so I, I like, I, I don't see that actually, because actually there is a, there is a line of where, especially when, I know when you, when you come down to the beach, I know where you're sitting right at, there is a line where the, where the palm trees are. And that's at least 15 feet. That's at least 15 feet. And she never, and that's a, that's a cardinal sin to be over that line. We want people to be enjoying the beach in front of Maggie's Blue Rose. Steve's does not open at all. We want that whole beach to be open because it's done for a reason.
You're talking about daytime. Yes.
Daytime. And then at nighttime.
It's a little different.
Yeah. At nighttime, basically, we don't, we, we put it back. And then when the people are gone, 5:30, then there, then we, then there's no rea, why, it's like, let's utilize the beach.
Right. Okay.
I think that we do need to require a certain amount from the wall, only for safety reasons because some people's backs are to the ocean and we wouldn't want them to push their chair too far back and fall.
Right. Right.
And then it's on us. So.
Yeah. Okay. But that's minor. Okay. I'm sorry, counsel, speak.
Do you have enough from us? Or what are, what are you looking for from us right now?
I guess the first thing, do you want to permit it or not after June 15th?
Yes. I mean.
I think, I think we have to wait to see what plays out on the 15th.
And then have a special meeting if we need to?
If we have to, yeah.
So right now you'd say business as usual, but no fee for the next.
At least till the 15th.
Three weeks or whatever.
June 15th is the second Tuesday, so that would be on a meeting day. So we should have that info by that day, I would assume.
So for clarity, Michael, you're, you're suggesting.
That we stay as.
Stay, yes, we will reckon status quo. But then after June 15th, we hopefully would know.
Whatever, what, the decisions we'd make would have to depend on whatever the governor says are, you know, how we're going to, and we adjust accordingly to, if it's 80%, then 80% back into the, into the business itself and only 20% allowed on the, on the beach. Or we make that decision of how many tables each restaurant is going to have or be allowed to have on the beach.
It looks like we're saying, are we kind of saying though, no lunch?
No, I, yeah, we're saying no lunch.
As of?
As of.
June 15th? Whether, doesn't matter what the, what the county says or the state says? It's just because we have people here on the beach?
We have people here. Yeah. Well, I, lunch, well, Memorial Day is going to be busy and to give up beach from the people that are coming here to enjoy that. Yeah, I would say no more, no more lunch on beach during Memorial Day weekend.
Is there a, is there a consensus on that, Cindy or Lisa? Just Memorial Day, no lunch on the beach, on the sand park?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's one thing we've decided on. That's good. Thanks, Michael. Okay, the other thing we've just, we haven't, okay, so if we wait till the 15th, well, let me ask another question. So it sounds like nobody wants to charge any fee until the next thing happens. And then, and is there any of you that says, no, but we never want to charge them at all? Is there anybody thinking that?
I don't think so.
No, because it's public, it's public property and they should be paying for the publics.
Okay. Good. Okay.
Can, can we, actually, I, I'm pretty sure you said you don't want any, any on the beach on Memorial Day, as we said.
Just for lunch.
Please, please consider, since there are restrictions still, like where there's not as many, as not as many tables that we have inside and all right, that, maybe along the baseline or something, please consider that. Because there's still, there's going to be a lot of people and there's, there's nowhere, then they're not going to be able to eat.
Just for lunch.
Please, please consider the ballot.
It's just lunch.
Just for lunch. Lunch only.
Right. I know. I'm talking, I'm representing Maggie's, Maggie's Blue Rose. No.
And I understand that, Steve. But for me, the guest coming to the island wants to sit on the beach. They're not concerned about where they're going to get lunch.
I, I understand.
And I understand where you're coming from on that.
Yeah.
But to me, the priority is the guests coming here and having the experience of enjoying the beach.
But just please, please just consider the, the, just the outside or maybe the Serpentine or something like, or something available because not all tables are available inside yet. You're, we're not talking about the restriction being left, lifted until June 15th. So.
Is she open for dinner?
Pardon me?
Is she open for dinner?
Oh, yeah. But she does, she does most of, all her business in the daytime. I do the business at night.
Right.
She kills it in the daytime. People all come to that place in the daytime, not at the, not as much.
I, in, in agreement with Councilman Ponse though, we have a lot of day trippers.
I understand.
And they're going to scoops and they're going everywhere else. And they're bringing their food or they pack their own lunch.
Yeah.
And they, or they just want to rest. And, because we get a lot of old people that like to sit on those, on the seawall. So that's just my concern a little bit, that, you know, or they go to Lloyd's or they go wherever.
Okay.
And that's my concern a little bit.
Okay. Well, I just started asking it just for, just for 2020 because of our restrictions still. But.
Well, staff could maybe.
I do, I do see your, your side. And I just wanted to basically, because that, you know, we are very, very busy at Maggie's in the daytime. So I'm trying to open up an avenue for the visitors to, to eat also. I mean, they come over and write that and there's, you're going to have to, it's going to be an hour and a half to, you know, and there's not too many places open in the daytime compared to night.
A question for you, Steve. And I know that, I know that this may not apply to all the restaurants. But would it make sense to allow Maggie's on that weekend to utilize Steve's for lunch during the day?
That's a, that's a, that's a good idea.
Okay. Maybe. I know that you don't like to crosswalks once often, but think through it.
I'll have to think about letting her do that.
Right. Either walk it upstairs or they walk it across the street.
Right. Well, because, I mean, I know that you guys don't necessarily like to have a crossover, but you want space.
And I'm willing to, I'm willing to, to do that.
Okay. Talk it over with your partner?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to talk to her about it. But there's going, I'm going to charge her rent. Thank you, everybody. And I appreciate everything you've done. I want to make sure you know, it's like, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm just trying to get into a common denomination with the city of Avalon because now it's like, everybody is talking about, oh, you're going to still do this, you're going to still, we don't know. We don't know. We have to talk, we have to wait till what the city says. Everybody is so happy there's dining on the beach. So.
I've never, I haven't.
Let's keep it. Let's keep it.
I haven't heard one negative content, comment about outdoor dining.
Yeah. Well, there's thousands of people that we serve and the Galleon serves and the state, and Maggie's. Please, please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Did I give them more than two minutes?
Okay, so this is what I have so far. We're going to wait until June 15th to see what comes down. And we will adjust accordingly. And if we have to have a special meeting, we will. There will be no lunches on the beach after June 15th. And Memorial Weekend, which is Friday, the 28th of May through Monday, the 31st, there would be absolutely no lunch on the beach. And we're still determining if the fees, what fee will be charged and how.
Right. I think, Cindy, Mayor Potem, you got a comment? You have a comment, sweetie? Sweetie?
Yeah, what about the heaters? I need a consensus on the heaters.
Right now, they're grouped.
Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted there for a minute. I heard your concern, Mayor, about the, about the heaters. And I think a fair remedy would be to just ask that the restaurants maybe put a second line around them while they're, while they're around the tree or the posts that they're around. And I, I think that would maybe help remedy your concern. But I, I still think we need to allow them to keep the heaters out at the screw jam.
Yeah. No, excellent. And I think it was when they were, when they were tethered a little low, that that was the problem. And they tethered them up a little higher. But to put two just to make it safe would be, would be good. As long as our fire chief is okay with that. Okay. Come up and talk to the mic. I'm sorry, chief. He had a comment about the propane.
I think they need to find another storage place to store them all, not leave them there. There's going to be a ton of people on the beach and there's going to be 20, 30 propane tanks laying there. So at night and all that, they got to go somewhere else that, and they let us know where they're at. And they only bring them down, they use them at night. And then at night, they take the ones out of the light, out of the thing and leave those. But we need to work on.
So are they storing them to the right of the stage as you're.
Yes.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody I just heard said, pick up truck and move them.
Some, so they're not all there with all the people around.
So do you think through June though, we could keep it the way it is only because, yes, our weekends are busy, but I think that the weekdays aren't so busy that we would have to worry about them then, chief? Or do you want to, can we have an internal discussion about this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. They'll, okay, that's good. Internal discussion about the propane.
And if so, then if we come to a consensus that they do need to be removed, we will notify the restaurant people. If the fire chief feels that we can hang in there for a little bit longer, then we'll allow the propane. Thank you.
That sounds great. Well, I think we've made some progress on this today. What do you think? Lisa? Somebody getting, are you getting comments?
I was looking at the picture. No, I was looking at, I took a picture of the screenshot of the questions just to see if there was anything else we needed to provide direction on.
Michael, you have any comments on that?
I do have one comment that had come in. They write, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm very happy that restaurants have had this opportunity to stay open during these tough times and have enjoyed eating from my favorite restaurants in such a great setting. But as space is already becoming limited and indoor dining reaches 100% capacity, I feel it's time to return public land to the public. As polite as the staff may be, just having tables set up there is discouraging to beachgoers, which is a major attraction to our town. I am glad that the restaurants had the opportunity, but it is time to return public property to the public. Micah Phillips, 318 Metropole.
Did you write that?
No.
Thank you, Micah, for your comment. Okay. I think we've made some progress. And Devin, thank you very much for your presentation. I know we're going to be seeing more of you. Do you have any final words you'd like to say? No? Okay. All righty. All right. If there's nothing else, are we good? Counsel?
I just wanted to just do a quick shout out to the Long Beach City Council for passing a favorable support of Assemblymember O'Donnell's motion for the cleanup for the channel.
Oh, they, oh, good.
Passed out tonight.